The Ombudspit, the screen you'll see the fire warning. There are no practices planned this evening, so if the alarm goes, please leave the building immediately. By one of three exits, one, two and three. Proceed outside and we'll meet outside Waitrose under the canopy. Also, can we just say a big welcome to Elizabeth Sims, our new Head of Planning at Waverley. Thank you, Elizabeth. Item one on the agenda, the minutes of the meeting held on the 17th of February. They've been on for half an hour, is you wish I signed them as a true record of that meeting. Thank you. Emma, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from councillors Liz Wheatley, Michael Goodridge, Brian Ellis, Pat Frost and Christian Hesser. And we have councillors Nick Williams and Val Henry here as substitutes.
Thank you very much. Declaration of interest.
Thank you, Chairman. I've received one in advance of the meeting, which is from councillor Val Henry. She has declared a non-perceval interest as chairman of the Uherst Parish Council Planning Committee.
Thank you. Item four, questions by members of the public, Emma.
None received, thank you.
Item A1, which is the subject to public speaking. Application for planning permission WA 2015 1903, land at Backwood Point, Cranley Road, Uherst. This is an outline application for the proposed development of up to 31 dwellings, with access to be determined. It's an alternate to proposal option two. It's land at Backwood Point, as I said. So, officers, I think Peter, you're going to start, aren't you?
Thank you, Chairman. By way of introduction, I just want to make a few key points to assist members' assessment in relation to this application. I'll then pass over to the case officer, Tim Bryson, to take members through the plans and determining issues in detail. Firstly, this is an application for a housing development on a greenfield site. You'll be aware that in policy terms, the council's strong preference, of course, is for residential development to generally be carried out on brownfield sites. However, this application must be assessed on its individual merits. The application is in outline form, with only access to be considered in detail at this stage. Therefore, members are being asked to consider the principle of the development, i.e. whether they feel that the application has demonstrated that up to 31 dwellings could be accommodated on the site in planning terms. Other than access, all matters, including the detail of the road layout and drainage system, are reserved for future consideration. And it would not be appropriate or reasonable to refuse permission tonight for a matter of detail that would be submitted for approval at reserve matters stage. Officers do recognise the strong concerns that have been raised by local residents and the parish council to the application. And these have been carefully considered. And the officers' report has sought to address these in detail. The second point is that there has been a planning, there has been planning history relating to this site. A smaller housing scheme for 13 dwellings was refused on a number of grounds quite recently. Firstly, that the proposed harm to the character and appearance of the site was not outweighed by the benefits of the scheme, as the proposal failed to provide a suitable mix of housing to meet the recognised need identified within the council's strategic housing assessment and local plan policy. And then appropriate mechanism was not in place to secure onsite provision of affordable housing and off-site infrastructure improvement. A third point to remind members of is the government's policy in relation to housing development, as expressed at paragraph 50 of the MPPF. This requires local planning authorities to plan to meet housing need. The current scheme would provide 29.5%, which is up to nine units of affordable housing, and is also an acceptable mix and also provides, suggested provides, an acceptable mix of market housing. This is a clear benefit of the scheme to be balanced against any planning objections. As with other greenfield applications, the committee has previously agreed, the application seeks to meet the borough-wide and not just local housing need. The proposal includes a mix of one, two, three and four bedroom units. So the site is located within the countryside beyond the Green Belt. In accordance with paragraph 49 of the MPPF, policies for the supply of housing should not be considered up to date if the local planning authority cannot demonstrate a five-year supply of deliverable housing sites. As members are aware, the council cannot currently demonstrate a five-year supply of housing. And so, in relation to housing applications, and insofar as policy T2 of the local plan being a housing land supply policy, officers believe and advise that this policy should be considered out of date. However, it's still a judgment for members as to whether a development of the site would be harmful to the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside in terms of its extent, size and impact, and whether it would support a thriving rural community. Finally, the assessment has triggered technical assessments in relation to flood risks, foul drainage, ecology and highways. Members will see from the report that there are no reasonable objections at this outline stage to the proposals on these grounds, subject to relevant legal agreement and conditions which are set out. The key assessment for members is whether any identified harm would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits when assessed against the policies in the MPPF as a whole, or whether there's specific policies within the framework which indicates that permission should be refused. I hope this is helpful for members, and I'll pass over to Tim to take you through the plans and issues in more detail. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. So, members, the site measures 1.26 hectares and is located off Cranley Road to the north, accessible via an existing vehicle access track. The site forms part of paddock grounds which are associated with the existing dwelling known as Backwood Point. The site has a natural grass surface and existing feature pond adjacent to the western boundary. A public footpath runs through the site, providing pedestrian, public pedestrian links from Cranley Road through to the recreation ground. The site surroundings consist of predominantly residential plots to the east and south, and the recreation ground beyond the remainder of the site. In terms of location in relation to Uherst itself, what I've provided here for you members is an extract from the 2002 local plan, which shows the extent of the policy RD1 settlement boundary around Uherst. Really, it's just to provide you with a wider spatial position of the site in relation to the village. As outlined earlier, the application is an outline application for up to 31 dwellings, with all matters reserved except for access. An indicated indicative site layout and mix has been provided. The indicated mix of dwellings is as follows: three one-bedroom dwellings, 12 two-bedroom dwellings, 10 three-bedroom dwellings and six four-bedroom dwellings, which include nine of these for affordable housing. Access is proposed via the existing vehicle access from Cranley Road, which you can see here. The access track would be widened and resurfaced, although the finished surface would be subject of reserve matters application. Although the indicative layout shown here is indicative and not to be secured as part of this application, it does outline how a scheme for 31 dwellings could be achieved on the site. Again, design and scale is a reserve matter. However, the following has been provided within the design access statement accompanying the application. This shows the front elevations of the southernmost dwellings on the indicative layout. And as you can see, the aspirations in the design would be for traditional-looking residential dwellings. In terms of access, the proposal includes a widening of the existing access road. The red line here shows how, shows a proposed access route, including its width. The access road would be widened to 4.1 metres at its minimum and 4.8 metres at its maximum. The County Highway Authority have provided a detailed response on the application, which is outlined in full in the agenda, starting on page nine. They have specifically outlined to officers that a width of 4.1 metres is wide enough for two cars to pass, and 4.8 metres is wide enough for a car to pass with a refuse truck. Further, the widening of the existing drop curb to the west on Cranley Road is proposed and secured by a condition which would allow easier access to the site for vehicles coming from the west. In terms of density, some members on the site visit sought clarification on density of the scheme and some densities in the surrounding area to the site. The density of the proposal, the 24.6 dwellings per hectare, and this is based on the full site area, including the access road. In terms of densities of surrounding residential development, what I've done here for members is really taken from our own internal mapping system. I've covered areas near the site of existing residential built form, basing it around roughly a hectare in size to make it comparable to the, to the site. The site is here, if you see the little pond here, which is part of the existing site. So, to the right-hand side of the site, covering there at 1.13 hectares, which includes 23 dwellings, comes out 20.3 hectares, dwellings per hectare. Slightly further north of the site, again, nearer a hectare in size. Just to give you an idea, 17 dwellings here, 17.3 dwellings per hectare. And continuing this, this really captures the dwellings to the south of the site, which are on Cranley Road. As you'll note, much lower density here. But really, just to help members get an idea of the surroundings in terms of density. So I hope that has been, been helpful. Just running through site photographs now. In terms of the existing access, on the left-hand side here is the existing access to the site. And on the right is an existing access to five residential properties known as Granston Close. Both these existing accesses share drop curbs at the moment, which access onto Cranley Road. This is where the proposed further extension of the drop curb would occur to allow greater ease of turning into the site coming from the west. This is a view looking down the access road. The widening of the access road would include the cutting back of existing hedge and tree stumps on the right-hand side. Although landscaping is a reserve matter, and should permission be granted, then the final detail of this would be captured under that future application, which would include the surfacing. I have sought some clarification from the agent on this hedging, which will provide you in a verbal update later in the presentation. Taking some views from within the site itself. This is a site looking south-west. On the left-hand side here, you'll note the hedge boundary. And beyond that are some of the rear gardens to properties on Cranley Road. To the right-hand side here is the established tree belt, I'll call it, along the northern boundary, where beyond you can just see the recreation ground. Again, from within the site view looking west, you'll note the existing pond that is proposed to be utilised as part of the Suds drainage scheme, and established tree line here. And view north-west, again, the northern tree boundary here with the recreation ground beyond. And view north, again, that tree line here is the northern boundary, the recreation ground beyond. This is taken from just in front of that existing pond on the site, looking back up at the existing residential property known as Backwood Point. Really, just to give members an idea of the, of the site, if members particularly haven't been there. And again, looking south-east, here is the rear of some existing properties on Cranley Road. And members, this is some views really from the public recreation ground beyond. This is looking north-east, where just in front of you here, you have the existing play area on the recreation ground. Beyond, you can just see some existing residential. And here is the existing pavilion building. This is slightly looking more further south-east, on the same, on the same area on the recreation ground, you'll see the pavilion building here. And beyond this tree line here is the site. You'll note here that's the existing conservatory of the existing dwelling known as Backwood Point. And again, members here, really a wider view, really captures the majority of the site, which is beyond this tree line here. That's just to help members put it into a bit of context with the views from the recreation ground. And again, looking south, you have the bowling club and building here, just beyond this hedge line, on the left-hand side is the site. In terms of determining issues with this application, I'd like to draw members' attention to the matters of judgment on the right-hand side of the screen. In terms of location of development, it is considered that the site is in a relatively sustainable location, providing good access to the amenities within the village. Further, the site is easily accessible to bus services, which could allow people to access other facilities and services in other settlements. The site joins a recreation ground where occupiers of the proposed dwellings would have good access to this public facility. Overall, the site is considered to be in a relatively sustainable location for new housing. In terms of the impact on the countryside, visual amenity and landscape character, the site is undeveloped and forms part of the natural landscape in the area. The proposal will result in a substantial change to this character. However, the site is not subject to specific landscape designations such as area of great landscape value or area of outstanding natural beauty, and is relatively self-contained within many wider public views arising from the recreation ground. Officers consider that the indicative scheme could be accommodated on site and would make use of the existing features on site, such as a pond, and provide natural buffer to the tree line boundary along the northern boundary. In terms of residential amenity, the site is located in a backland position where the indicated residential development would retain suitable distances to neighbouring properties. Whilst the proposed residential development would be visible from neighbouring properties, it is not considered to result in material harm and with acceptable form of development, taking into account its surroundings. I'd like to draw members' attention to the update sheet for this item. Members, note, we have had a formal response from the A and B officer, who has raised no objection. An additional condition, 21, is recommended, following an indication by the agent on site that the electricity telegraph pole at the site entrance would potentially be grounded as part of their overall development. And so, members, we have sought to apply that, to capture that and protect that. Chairman, further, I have a verbal update following committee site visit too. Since the site visit, officers sought clarification on affordable housing provision and potential for increase in contributions and the boundary hedge adjacent to the access road, following some queries raised by members on the site visit. In terms of affordable housing provision, it is, the agent has put forward that the proposed affordable housing provision is in line with the current local plan policy. However, acknowledges that the 0.5% shortfall, which can be provided in a commuted sum to make up to 30%. In terms of officer response to this, advice to members is that the affordable housing provision remains, remains appropriate and is a benefit to be weighed in the balance of this, of the overall scheme. In terms of the eastern boundary hedge on the access road, the agent has confirmed that in order to achieve the required width of the access road, the hedge would not be required to be removed. However, it is outlined to be of poor quality, and it would be beneficial if it were removed to ensure formal landscaping could be achieved. This has been outlined to be some form of vegetation. In terms of officer response to this, it is considered that the details of this boundary treatment could be captured under any reserve matter application for landscaping. We have had also, there is an error in the report. The top of, top paragraph on page 12, the final sentence is incorrect and has been amended by the County Highway Authority to read as follows. "The Highway Authority is therefore satisfied that the road safety data demonstrates that there is no existing accident problem in the vicinity of the site access road that would be exacerbated as a result of the proposed development." Additionally, a sentence is also added to informative six to include, "further to ensure long-term compatibility of the proposed vehicle, vehicle use as a permanent access with current usage of public footpath number 437. The applicant is advised to comply with such requirements as a local highway and rights-of-way authority may lawfully require." So, Chairman, the revised recommendation A is as follows: that subject to conditions 1 to 20 within the agenda, condition 21 within the committee update sheet, additional sentence to informative six, and completion of a section 106 agreement within three months of the date of the committee meeting to secure 29.5% affordable housing, including 0.5% commuted sum, infrastructure contributions towards off-site early years and primary education, environmental improvements, recreational facilities, onsite public footpath works, and the setting up of a management company for open space and Suds permission be granted. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much, Tim, and Peter as well. Turning now to public speaking, each has four minutes to present their case. I've asked first of all, John Robins, to step forward.
Thank you. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is John Robins and I represent the views of the 120 members of the West Uherst Residents Association. This site is of critical importance to the character of the village, and development here impacts significantly upon the recreation ground, a centrepiece of village life. This impact is so significant that it will change the essential character from rural to suburban by virtue of the dense urbanisation of this edge-of-settlement countryside location. No formal visual impacts assessment has been carried out, which is a fundamental requirement for development in such a sensitive area, exposed as it is to extensive public viewpoints. The proposed density of 24.6 dwellings per hectare is demonstrably out of character to the area and in stark contrast to recent assessment by the planning inspector at the Sayers Croft site in May last year, where 22 DPH was found to be out of character with the area. And this site is less than 200 metres away. Plus, of course, the very recent application for 13 dwellings on this site, which was rejected. And some of the reasons included density, scale and character harm. The local community is not set to benefit from a windfall of affordable housing, since that proposed is disappointingly low and not in line with other sites that have been released from the countryside for new housing. Access to the site is dangerous, congested and obstructs a public right-of-way, since it does not allow for pedestrians to pass when two vehicles pass each other. Traffic from 31 family homes would be considerable, with cars, pedestrians, bicycles, mums with buggies and children, all sharing one narrow lane with a passing place, and no proper pavement, and all exiting onto a very busy road. The applicant has presented two alternative schemes to our community, neither of which is satisfactory. The proposal meets in full the entire future housing allocation for the village, but is out of character with the area and brings with it much harm and little benefit. Councillors, I ask that you refuse this application on the grounds of inappropriate density, poor and dangerous access, insufficient affordable housing and harm to the countryside setting and public views. In addition, an approval would be unsafe due to conflict with the MPPF, obstruction of a right-of-way and lack of a full and proper assessment of the visual impact. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robins. Now we turn to councillor Mike Turner, Uherst Parish Council.
Chairman, members of the committee, good evening. My name is Michael Turner and I represent the Uherst Parish Council. My portfolio with the council is highways. And it's with particular concern for highways that I appeal to councillors to refuse this application. With great respect to the highways authority, local knowledge of the site reveals that there is, on average, at least one non-reportable RTC there per week, and that is per week. And it's mostly where the Cranley Road meets the Gabbridge Lane, at which point there is good visibility, certainly better than there is at this site entrance. I would agree that 70 metres forward vision is fine when the road is dry and sunlit. However, that is not the case on a dark and icy morning, when the car is probably doing 39 miles an hour, which seems to be the average speed on this piece of road, regardless of changing conditions. Highways themselves admit that queuing in the bellmouth is possible at some times a day due to the only being room for two cars to pass, and not a car plus a large service vehicle over the first 20 metres of the access road. Their estimate of 15 two-way movements at peak time in the morning and 18 at peak time in the evening, I feel is somewhat optimistic. I think it's going to be rather more than that. And should there be 31 properties using that access, it's almost certainly going to be the case. Should the bellmouth fill up as well, it may be because it is shared with still more properties with the adjoining road. And there could well be stationary traffic on either side of the main road, waiting to enter. Should this development go ahead with this particular access in place, it will give no-one any satisfaction to hear of a space of reportable collisions and resultant injuries or worse. To conclude, I note that there have been 83 objections to this development and one supporter. And I note that the sole supporter is a supplier of bricks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Turner. And now Colin Vire.
Good evening, Chair, committee members. My name is Colin Vire. I'm an architect and I work for Millwood Designer Homes. The site at Backwood Point is approximately 1.3 hectares, or three acres in area, and was originally identified as a possible housing site in the 2014 Waverley Schla, in which it described the site as being residential garden, located in countryside outside of the Green Belt, which adjoins the US settlement boundary and has good accessibility to a local centre, a primary school and a bus stop. Given the findings of the 2014 Schla, and in the absence of a five-year housing land supply, we believed that the site was a suitably sustainable and durable site. So, in February last year, we drew up a low-density scheme and presented this to the parish council and local residents. One of the main points that came out of that consultation was that the proposed development did not meet a local housing need for smaller family dwellings. We acknowledged this and drew up an alternative high-density scheme. Both proposals were presented to local residents at a public exhibition in April last year, and since then, we have continued to dialogue with the parish council up until last September, when we submitted the application. Government planning policy states that application should be assessed in line with the MPPF, as well as any saved local plan policies. And it also confirms that there should be a presumption in favour of sustainable development. In the Schla and the committee report, both conclude that Backwood Point is a sustainable site. Hence, the principle of residential development is acceptable. With regard to proposed development, the site layout will be a traditional form of housing fronting onto the new access road. The proposals will retain and enhance the existing pond for both ecological and amenity value. And the existing tree belt will be retained, and the dwellings will be designed to maintain an open boundary and to have an interesting frontage when viewed back from the surrounding open space. The application complies with local plan policy H4, as the scheme will provide a range of, a mix of dwellings. And the committee report confirms that the housing numbers will go towards the council's housing supply quota and US housing need. Local plan policy H5 requires a minimum of 30% of the total dwellings to be affordable. The proposed includes nine affordable dwellings, which the committee report states is 29.5%. We would say that's actually 30% of the total. I understand that very recently, there had been some discussion as to why we're only proposing 30%. proposing thirty percent. However, throughout the five months this application has been running, we have been in discussion with officers and have been guided by them with regard to the housing mix and numbers, and at no time did officers formally request that affordable housing percentage be increased, nor ask for any viable viability exercise to be undertaken to justify those numbers. However, we would be happy to make up the point five percent shortfall as a commuter sum payment. At the site visit yesterday, Surrey County Council highways also attended, and I know there's been a lot of opposition to that, but they have confirmed it is wholly acceptable, as have all other statutory consultees, and we believe that this sort of development is wholly acceptable. There have been public objections to the prematurity of the application, however, as the committee report states, that the NPPF having a presumption in favour of sustainable development, then a refusal on the grounds of prematurity cannot be justified. To conclude, the site is surrounded by housing in public open space, it is within the US village, and so is a sustainable location that is appropriate and suitable for housing. It will provide much-needed family and affordable housing that meets a local identified need. Thank you.
Councillor Henry, Val Henry.
Thank you, Chairman. As a preamble, I'd first of all like to thank the officers for a very thorough report. It's very informative, thank you very much for that. And I was very appreciative of the members that came out yesterday for the site visit, members of the JPC, thank you very much for that. As the ward member, obviously I'm not against development in Uherst, on the contrary, I agree that we need to contribute our fair share to the borough's needs. However, I do have concerns relating to this particular development, the development of a three-acre, low-value, small holding outside the village settlement. It's an area which is not flat, and it serves as a lung between Cranley Road and the recreation centre, which is a very well-used amenity of the village. In simple language, I have problems with the density, I have problems with its setting, and because it can't be served by a safe and means, it's not served by a suitable and safe means of access, I have grave concerns about that. Officers rejected its sister application, one nineteen oh two, citing among other reasons, the proposal by virtue of the number of dwellings, urbanised and impact and harm to the character and appearance of the open field, failed to preserve the intrinsic beauty and character of the countryside. This application is more than twice the size of nineteen oh two, and so to conclude that the same does not apply will be totally inconsistent. This application represents urbanisation on a much larger scale and harms the view from the recreation ground, which I said previously is a very well-used amenity. And I consider that to be significant and material. Echoing the conclusions of the parish council and the various speakers, access to the site is essentially a single track with a passing place. This could endanger pedestrians who would have no refuge or escape in the event of an incident. Traffic volume estimates, page thirty-four out of the Yellow Pages, seem to be too low for an estimate of this size, bearing in mind that people have home deliveries, gardeners, plumbers, cleaners, et cetera, et cetera. And the size, bearing in mind, sorry, I've lost my way, and the reasonable degree of sustainability mentioned by the officers is based partly on pedestrian access to the local amenities and public transport. To my mind, this is a hazardous situation to be in, and I would like to suggest or put it up for consideration that in view of the scale of the development on this site, off-road, on-site access should require a two-way access to ensure the safety of pedestrians, bearing in mind that this is a public footpath, so you've got the access from Cranley Road through to the recreation ground, so it's not solely for the residents of this new It's disappointing that there's a mere twenty-nine point five provision for the allocation of affordables. This is a disappointingly low number, which I view as inadequate. I think I'll stop at that juncture and open it up for debate, but thank you for the opportunity of getting the first foot in. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Henry. Councillor Forscough.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Henry, as ward member, for the opportunity to go and see the site, it was very informative. I actually know this site quite well, because as previous ward member for Ellen's Green, the recreation was, the recreation ground was somewhere that I often went to. Do you know, I don't really want to be sound to be mean here, but this is yet another one on a green field, and it's sort of, it looks a bit desperate, it really does. We're cramming all these houses into this small residential area, into someone's very beautiful big back garden, admittedly, but we're sort of cramming in all these houses. I'll tell you where I have some real problems on this, I have the problems with the viability. Looking at the number of consultees, nobody has contacted Network UK Electricity. But yet, we're talking, I've heard it mentioned on the site visit, I've heard it mentioned again this evening, can I just ask for clarification from the officers? Does that pole supply electricity to the surrounding houses?
Yes.
Yeah?
As far as we're aware, that does, yes, supply electricity surrounding it.
I have very limited, but some, experience on the cost and the interruption and the hazardous nature of trying to put a cable underground and feed, and I think the cost of that would be absolutely colossal. So when we're talking about twenty-nine point five percent affordable housing, when it actually comes to it, when it comes to the viability of it, if that is something that's going to be done against mass disruption to several neighbours, is it affordable? Is it something logically that can be done? So I have real problems there. On a number of issues, I really don't like this application, it doesn't sit well within the community. Uherst is a beautiful village, and I agree with Val Henry, you know, none of us in our towns and villages are anti-development, it comes back to the inappropriateness of anti-development, and that's what it boils down to. Again, it's another site that's inappropriate, it's overdeveloped, and in my opinion, not viable, and I would like to see more research into the viability of it before we go further. And also, I have real problems with a previous inspector's report on a lower density of numbers, and there's a contradiction in terms here, what we're doing, Sayers Croft is not far from the site at all, and yet that one was, if my memory serves me right, it was granted by officers, overturned at committee, and failed at appeal. It just doesn't make sense to me, I just do not think this is appropriate development in that particular location. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I ask a question first of all, please? Do we actually have, or is there, an indicative density from the twenty-fourteen Schla?
There's not an indicative density, no. Thank you, Chairman.
Because I too have huge concerns about this site. I went on the site visit, only yesterday, and walked all of it, walked from the recreation ground, and I hope saw everything, and I just feel, it's back to heart and head and everything else we have to mix up at the moment, but I just feel this is too dense, there's far too many, it is urbanising, and the one thing Uherst isn't is an urban centre, and I just, it's déjà vu again, again, sorry, déjà vu. You know, we see these indicative applications, these outline applications, time after time at the moment, and obviously the developer would put in the maximum, but, you know, when you look at this site and you look at the density of the properties around it and you feel a site, I think that's something when you go on a site visit, you do get a feel for a site in a way that perhaps it's difficult to get from the pictures, however good they are, and it just feels wrong. When we were standing, just looking at it, just imagining that density of built form and that, the hard standing that would go with it, it's difficult to say as it's outlined whether they were poorly designed, but we keep seeing this repetitive type of outline application, just sort of wiggly roads and a lot of housing, no real provision for imaginative thought, and I know it's outlined and I know we're only supposed to be looking at access, but of course developers always do put in a sort of indication of what's going to go on there and an indication of density, and I think this is a step too far on this site, I really do, I think it's inappropriate. I think it's, I was a little bit cheered by an appeal decision at Moons Hill in Farnham fairly recently, it was only for three houses, but it was turned down despite the pressure to build on the intrinsic beauty of the countryside, slightly different area, but, you know, I thought, well, at least somebody else has got a vague idea of what we're trying to say. Development, yes, wait, do it properly, and then we'll support what you're doing, but to rush in all these outline applications, and as I say, whack in the maximum just because you can, without really getting to know the character of the area that you're building in, and I just feel this is inappropriate. The density's too high, I think it's out of character with the village, and I found it very difficult to support this.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I find this quite difficult, because following the approach that we're required to take, the most important thing which the officers concluded is that this is a relatively sustainable site, and having been there, I have to agree. And it is that, in fact, which brings into play the presumption in favour of sustainable development. Effectively, it tips the balance somewhat in favour of such an application, so that if you were minded to just object, you actually should approve. Looking at the pros and cons, the cons are that first of all, it's outside the village boundary, which is not just contrary to Policy C two, which we can't give full weight to, of course, but it's also contrary to the sentiment of National Planning Policy Framework, paragraph seventeen, which is most definitely up to date. I entirely agree that the density is, it's really twice the surrounding site. I'm grateful to councillor Franciscu for mentioning the previous development two hundred metres away, because what we were there concerned about was the comparison between the proposed density and the density of the immediately surrounding houses, and if you, can you go back to the plan rather than the photo? There's another one, actually, which, can you go back actually to the first, yeah, there, that'll do. If you actually draw a rectangle which embraces the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven houses down the right-hand side, and the seven down the bottom, you'll see that actually they occupy an area which is slightly greater than the one point two six hectares, but there's only about fourteen of them, so their density is really about eleven dwellings per hectare, and I would personally remove the pond from the area, because you can't build on that, so the effective density for visual amenity purposes is more like thirty or certainly higher than twenty-four point six. So I think in round terms, we're saying that it's twice the density of the immediately adjoining dwellings, and that is something which is a large factor in excess. I also accept that the access is hardly brilliant, with that number of houses, the chances of unfortunate meetings can't be completely discounted, though I'm quite sure no one will be bombing up and down that track at any great speed. And I noticed that of the previous reasons given, which in a sense is captured by Policies C two and seventeen, the officers found that the thirteen strong development still offended those, so as I think another colleague said, it's a bit hard to argue they don't offend, this application doesn't offend them at least as much. And lastly, I must admit, I hadn't thought of this at all, we did hear that the plan was to bury the electric cable, and I would love to know what the cost of that is. I think it's a fair point to worry how that would impact on the developer's profitability. But those are the arguments against. In favour, you've got the fact that it would certainly support the borough-wide need to a noticeable extent, we're not talking about three, we're talking about thirty houses, and the nine affordable houses clearly is useful, looking at the report, I think there are twenty-one families awaiting that sort of support inside Alfold. And when we were taken down to the recreation ground to look back at it, which is a very useful exercise, yes, I can understand why people say it would make a difference, it certainly would, but the truth is that you've got the bowling club looming over the northern horizon, you've got a line of trees between it, so I'm not really inclined to give that quite as much weight as others would, but that's just my view. So putting those two together, or comparing the pros and the cons, if this were the ordinary planning balance, I would have no hesitation whatsoever in saying that this did not pass the test, that the adverse impacts definitely, but how much is the issue, definitely outweighed the benefits. But when you apply the skewed balance which the NPPF requires us to, it's a much closer call. And I am in some difficulty on this, but I think in the end, given what happened at the other site not very far away, where we objected to a smaller factor increase in density compared to the surrounding houses, I can't see why a decision to refuse this would have any less chances of being upheld on appeal. So I think having recognised the density is actually twice that of the immediately surrounding houses, I am of the view, subject to what I hear from other people, that the adverse impacts do just significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits, and therefore I'm inclined to unfortunately not support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Stone.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I just ask the officers a question, please? Are we supposed to just be considering the access?
Thank you, Chairman, yes, councillors stand, yes, we're considering the detailed access onto the site and the principle of development at the site.
Thank you for that. First of all, and let me start on the access, can we go back to the drawing of showing the drive? You talk about four point eight metres and four point two metres, I believe? Four point one, was it? Okay, fine. And the four point one, I'm assuming, is right at the road entrance, because looking, I presume that's a scale map there. You talk about drop curbs, for those of the people in the gallery, they don't know me, I've been around a long time, I run a large fleet, or not large fleet, I run HGVs in N O, and you will not get a dust car in that entrance, and four point eight metres, I doubt whether you will get a dust car to pass down that lane, it will be very, very tight. And if I was risk-assessing that, on jobs we do in London and places like that, you'd have to say you've got to stop the traffic, one way or the other. Also, VOSA recommends that you, that you should have the length of a lorry, have we got a problem? Just chatting amongst themselves, okay, fine, that's all right.
Please carry on, I'm sure you...
Okay. Okay. VOSA, which is the HGV vehicle recommendation, states that you should have an absolute two-length gap for two lorries, so one coming out, one coming in, so if the one coming in doesn't have to back out on the road, the one that's in there has to back up the drive. I just don't see how that's going to work, I think the access is awful. I'm not against development in principle, I think it's too dense as well, if we're going to talk about that, and I'd need to see a lot more, so I'm sorry, Tim, it's a good presentation, but I can't agree with your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor James.
Thank you, Chairman. Can you show the indicative layout? And I quite understand the density... And I quite understand the density, but I was just looking at it. The bottom row of houses of built form is seven, which is similar to the Cranley Road one. You then get 1, 2, 3, 4 in the next bit, 1, 2, 3 in the top bit, and two in the corner, which is 14. Some of those are flats, semi-detached and little one-bedrooms. If you put them all together, they become a five-bedroomed. So in a funny way, the density there isn't of built form, isn't as high. When you say 31, but you take away, you know, if nine of them are one-bedroomed, that's the equivalent of two four-and-a-half-bedroomed houses, I would suggest that some of those along the front are big ones. That's just a point to look at, the size of the density of built form. If everybody's worried about how many houses, it's, I have a thing of how many bedrooms in comparison, and then you compare it to the one on the top right, which I think was 21 to the hectare, some of those might be, they might all be four-bedroomed ones, so the actual density of built form isn't as high as when you say dwellings. Thank you, Chairman.
Chancellor Munn, do you want to come back?
Thank you very much. I'm not ready to say anything other than that I did, I've now found the SHLAR data, and the WBC estimated yield was actually 17, with a density of 11.49 dwellings per hectare, which certainly doesn't make me unhappy with my previous conclusion. I think the square that was referred to did contain the much denser cluster on the right-hand side. Anyway, that's what the SHLAR said.
Thank you very much for that, and, okay, Chancellor McLachlan.
Thank you, Chairman. Could I start by asking the officers a question, and then I'd like to make some brief comments? The 2014 SHLAR has been referred to a few times. Can I ask what the categorisation of this site was in terms of the red, green, orange categorisation, and whether that's still the same or has it been anyway updated?
Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the rating within the 2014 SHLAR was amber, and since that, we haven't published an updated version, so it remains as an amber site in the publication version. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for that answer. Can I briefly say that I don't know UHurst very well? I live as far as you can get from New Hurst and Waverley, living in Farnham. I think I may have passed through it before now, but the site visit was the first time I've visited it. And I did take the opportunity before and after the site visit to look around the village, and it just seems to me that this development is totally out of character, quite out of character with the village, and for that simple reason, I certainly wouldn't be supporting it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Chancellor Baum.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, everybody's talking about density, and I have a level of sympathy with their concerns about density. Looking at that site, as we did yesterday, it was just idyllic. And to see that smothered in houses seems to be a terrible shame, but we have to build somewhere. But we have to be able to get somewhere as well, and that access drive, I think, is bizarre. They say we can open it out to 4.1 metres, it seemed difficult to open, but the highways officer clearly had done quite a lot of work on it. It's the, I think it's the longest report I've ever seen on any about planning reports from the highways department. So, which is good, but nevertheless, it still creates a situation where you have two roads running parallel, coming onto a busy road with parking on the road outside, obscuring any form of visibility. Are we going to have a traffic light system between the two roads? We've got five dwellings in one road coming onto the road. Who has priority to turn right or left? Are they going to cross over in some way, or are we going to control them in a different way? We've already talked about the problems of the high voltage power cables and the pole there, which I think are a hazard and a potential strong hazard if we had a vehicle trying to turn there and it nudged it, we'd suddenly find it all crashing to the ground. The ideal, in my view, would be to combine those two lanes into one, have a much wider road, have ample room for a public footpath, which is what's there, and the vehicles will be able to pass safely. But we're not in that position, because I suspect the two parties have not talked to each other. It's not a hedge down the middle, it's a row of tree stumps with a bit of outgrowth in the bottom. So you can't chop away half a tree stump, you've got to take it all. That still doesn't create enough, I don't believe, of width there to make it a safe and accessible access. It's just, I just didn't feel comfortable with it at all. It's what we might have had 100 years ago, or for very small developments, and I think the one on the right, the houses on the right, have a slightly wider access road than this proposal. So that is my major concern. We're here to discuss access, that's the only thing that we make a final decision on, although, as I say, lots of concern about density, but it's the access there, and I'm very concerned about that access.
And Chancellor Adams.
Thank you, Chairman. I have similar concerns to many of my colleagues here, but I was also concerned about the access in respect of all the houses on the site. I'm not sure how wide those roads are in the site. If those roads need to be considerably wider, then I wonder if they'll get the houses in. Secondly, there is no facilities really for visitor parking, and although there is parking for each of the houses at probably about the minimum level, as somebody else mentioned, there'll be service vehicles, there will be all sorts of visitors to those sites, and I can see those internal roads, as they're designed, being jammed up. So that, in a way, is another aspect of density. I don't see any comment about broadband being provided on the site, and I think that really any new housing development now should have proper high-speed broadband provided. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And Chancellor Fraschuscu, you want to come back, I believe?
Thank you, Chairman, very much appreciated. I wanted to pick up on a point that councillor Coburn made, and a point that councillor Stenit made, is that, you know, this application that we're looking at before us this evening, it's about determining access and the principle of development. Once the principle of development has been established, and the outline planning application can change if the viability of the project is altered. So I think, bear in mind what we said earlier, I think that is a real consideration here. The point that Carol Coburn made, and I think it's a very valid one, and one or two of us in this room are getting a bit of a reputation for being anti-everything, and it's not a question of being anti-everything, it's a question of, please, come back to us with something that's creative, something that's different, something that robs of our greenfields. And it's like Groundhog Day, it's the same thing, different, it's the same principle all the time. Greenfield site, mass houses, limited affordable housing on them. And I just think until we get our local plan in place and until we identify our five-year, we're going to be faced with this same thing over, and it's getting boring, it's not fair on residents, it's not fair on Waverley. I actually really feel for our officers and the portfolio holders, because this is what we have to content with on a day-to-day basis. But I would like to see that we are not curtailed by policy, that we actually are more creative, that we encourage our developers to come back with something different, and not keep producing the same thing over and over again. It's really, really boring. We talk about the demand versus need, in most of the cases that I've seen, and this one included, demand and need are two very different things, both vitally important. But with a lot of these applications that say that the harm seriously outweighs any need, in my opinion, and that, please, let's be a bit creative and find alternative ways instead of, for building and putting applications together, rather than the same greenfield sites, same houses, same density problems, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you, Chairman, for letting me come back.
Thank you. Before I go back, Chancellor Stenit, Peter, you want to come in?
Thank you, Chairman. I was only going to come and round up on all the issues, I don't know if you want, councillor Stenit wants to come back first.
Indeed. Chancellor Stenit.
If it's any help to my colleagues, just wanted, I've just worked out briefly, with the new legislation on lorries as well, with the mirrors for cyclists, which paramount now, we have to have, the average width of a lorry is almost three metres wide. So if you're going down that lane, it's going to be pretty tricky with people walking and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor Henry, did you want to come back?
Thank you, Chairman. If I, thank you. Just to say, I've really welcomed the views of the councillors this evening, it's been good to hear what other people have been thinking about their plan in application. I know the neighbourhood plan doesn't carry any weight, or our UHurst plan will not carry the weight because it's not as advanced enough, but I just want to say some words about that because people in the village are working really hard to get on with that neighbourhood plan. Progress is absolutely good, I've had an update today. The new housing that will be evidence-based will meet local needs and help sustain the community, and it's our wish in UHurst to develop without harm the countryside and in a more sustained way. The development that we're looking at at the present time, I think, is harmful, and the change in character will be out of character for UHurst. But thank you all for your comments and views. Thank you.
Thank you. Turn to the officers now. Peter?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'll pick up on a number of issues, I'll work through the comments that have been made. I'll pick up on the initial comments regarding the points with the refused scheme. We obviously had a refused scheme for 13 dwellings. The difference between that site and this site is the balances that we've weighed into account. And in this current scheme, we have before us a housing mix, which is a reasonable amount of housing, which provides the mix, which reflects the council's need, and on that basis, the harm that was identified on the smaller scheme, or the lower-density scheme, is outweighed by the provision of housing on the site. So that is the key change in the refused scheme and what is now the recommendation before you, and we have to give significant weight to that provision of housing. The next point is on regarding the access. You'll be aware that reference was made to it, the county council have considered it a lot of detail, and looked at the detailed access, and particularly the widths of the access road into the site, and they're content that, given the number of traffic, or vehicle movements in and out of the site, and the likely limited number of HGVs, except there will be HGVs entering and exiting the site, refuse and delivery vehicles, very unlikely that there's going to be two there at the same time, and if there is, there's adequate visibility to allow one to wait slightly further back from the access to the wider point of 4.8 metres, which we're told by the County Highway Authority is suitable for vehicles to pass. The point is made has been with regards to the electricity pole at the access. There is no firm proposal to bury it, it has been indicated by the applicants that they would bury it, so the additional condition is put on so we can control that, but the development can be carried out with the electricity pole in its current position. But obviously, that may be a benefit if it was buried, but that is a point, we've added the condition to control that, it's not a firm proposal, and it can be delivered as existing. Reference is made to the Sayers Croft Appeal Decision, and that is an important decision which we have given account to. In discussion, a lot of the discussion has been around the density and the visual impact. The differences between the two, in the Sayers Croft decision, it again weighed up the impacts, the harm. There was two harmful impacts identified, the first one being heritage, so the harm to the setting of an adjacent grade-two listed building, and the second one, a visual impact. So combined, the inspector concluded that there was significant and demonstrable harm, which, I'll repeat again, is for members to identify that, and in accordance with paragraph 14, we need to identify that if we weren't going to accept the recommendation. There's a couple of other detailed points about the layout of the site, parking. My members, this is, it is an outline proposal, indicatively, they have shown the layout in the proposals, but I can confirm in that layout, the case officer has done a detailed assessment of the parking requirements, and it would meet the council's minimum standards or guidelines that we set. Just one other point, there was a point raised about the broadband, except that could, there should be a strategy in place to do that, and we could add a condition if members were to accept the recommendation, to require a strategy to deliver it to the site, and we can put some wording together on that for you. So just round up, I mean, what we're required to do, councillor Munn had talked through it in detail, but the paragraph 14 requires a presumption in favour of sustainable development. We consider the site to be in a sustainable location in terms of access to services, facilities. There's no significant harm identified in terms of biodiversity. We can see it's accepted, it's difficult to look at a greenfield site in such a location that's undeveloped, but the wider impacts aren't significant, development screened from the highway, and there's no wider landscape harm. So on that, officers consider there isn't a significant demonstrable harm identified. There is harm, but it's not significant to outweigh the provision of housing. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Chancellor Stenit, just one last return?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to take issue with what Peter's just said there, although he's a good friend of mine, I hope. You say they'll only be very frequently visited by HGVs. Your average landscape gardener and who comes round does your lawns and your bits and pieces is 2.5 metres wide, and that doesn't allow for mirrors. And also, I think your measurements are way over the top, and I think my fellow colleague, Mr Byon, made a very good point, you can't cut a tree in half, you're going to go into other people's properties. Not against the scheme, but I think we just need more information. Thank you.
Thank you very much, indeed. Chancellor Adams.
I did make a point about the width of the internal roads that are proposed, I mean, that does impact access to a lot of the houses, so I just wondered if you'd comment on those.
Peter?
Thank you, Chairman. So I was just discussing with the case officer, the internal roads are shown at a width of 4.8, and again, that's what the county council consider to be appropriate. Also, sort of turning areas, hammerheads within the site would also be suitable for the type of vehicles that would enter the site. So we have looked at what, because it is quite a detailed plan that they put down, and we have assessed that, in terms of, indicatively, that width of road could be accommodated within the site. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I think we'll move on. On this outline application for the proposed development of up to 31 dwellings with access to be determined, I thank members for sticking very much within the broad outline of that and not wandering through many of the other subjects that are going to come up in future. So the recommendation A, subject to conditions 1 to 20 within the agenda, condition 21 within the committee update sheet, an additional sentence to informative 6, and completion of a 106 legal agreement within three months from the date of this meeting, and to secure 29.5% affordable housing, as well as 0.5 commuted some infrastructure contributions towards off-site early years and primary education, environmental improvements, recreational facilities, onsite public footpath works, and the setting up of a management company for open space and SUD's permission be granted. Can I have a show of hands, those in favour of granting permission?
Two.
Those against? Thank you. So move on then, that is lost. Can I have an alternative recommendation, please? Chancellor Fraschuscu.
Chairman, I think it's only fair that the ward member says what the recommendation is, the alternative recommendation. If you so wish, if not, then I'll do it. I'd like to recommend that there's a refusal... Yeah, I'd like to recommend that there's a refusal and on the grounds of density, access, help me, members.
Councillor Coburn?
I'll help, fellow councillor. Uh, I think that the harm to the character and appearance of the local area and to the wider village of, uh, U-Hurst, um, to the intrinsic beauty and qualities of the countryside, I think the harm to all those things would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits of this particular application for all the reasons that councillor Foroski has just outlined.
Thank you. And councillor Munnat, are you seconding?
I certainly am, and I was going to say, I think reason one, given on page twenty-four, is a pretty good template, if you add in policies D one and D four as well, which also turn on number of dwelling scale, urbanising impact, et cetera. And then I agree, a separate one dealing with the, um, health and safety aspects of access.
Councillor Byon?
The one thing that we're not majoring on is access, and clearly that's one of the major points about the, the application before us is access. So I think inadequate access, um, for the provision of, uh, well, providing sufficient width of access for modern-day vehicles, um, and safety of entry and exit onto the main road.
Councillor Henry?
Can I add to that then, please, mister chairman? Um, I'd like to, to recommend that it is refused in conjunction with the, the other items, with the access, the access is not doable. Sorry, I need to justify.
Peter, Tim, do you, yeah?
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, thank you, members, I think we've, we've gone for, we've, we've taken the reason for refusal one as a starting point on page twenty-four, and we will add into that the, the specific D one and D four policies, and make specific reference to, um, I, I think that actually picks up on, on all the points, particularly on, on that, unless there's any other points you feel that need to be added. Just one. Density is in there, oh, sorry, density isn't in there, so we need to add that, that to it, sorry, I'll sort of, apologies. So we'll add density to that, that reason for refusal, so by virtue of the number of dwellings, density, scale, and urbanising and so on. Um, on the, the second reason for refusal, it's been forwarded on access, um, we've got to be clear that the county council, as, you know, the authority on this position, haven't raised an objection to the application. The detailed transport assessments, transport statements submitted with the application demonstrated it could work, and the assessment from the county council demonstrated it could work in, in a safe manner and in capacity terms. Um, so we would advise that we avoid this technical position, that'd be our position, but if there's this concern regarding the convenience and amenity issues, we could, we could circulate or could draft a, a reason for consideration on those grounds.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, can I just, councillor Hill?
Um, chairman, I think we should cast some doubt on, um, the highways agency's, um, suggestion that there might only be fifteen two-way vehicle movements in the evening peak. I mean, in U-Hot, I would imagine that just about every adult is going to have a car, um, and, and there are going to be a lot of children going to and from school, and fifteen cars is, is just not feasible. I really don't think it is. So, uh, that's what I'd like to suggest.
Councillor Munnat?
Yes, um, thank you very much, chairman. Um, I think the, um, second reason should stress in particular the, um, health and safety risks to, to, to non-car users of the bridleway, that's, um, horses, pedestrians, cyclists. Yeah. Oh, it's a, yeah.
Does anyone else want to add any other condition? Do we?
Chair.
No, sorry, Elizabeth, carry on.
Chairman, just to add to the, um, discussion about safety, Peter has, um, reminded you of the view of the county highway authority, and I know you've heard us say this on many occasions, but what we do guard you against is, um, taking their advice too lightly. You'll, you'll be aware of the guidance in the NPPG, which does advise you should take into account the view of your statutory consultees, and they are specifically advising you on safe, the safety aspect of the access. And I know that is a challenging one, but I, I feel that I must warn you that if you do take the opposite view without overt technical evidence to suggest that they're wrong, you do run the risk of being found to be unreasonable on that particular ground on appeal, and that is why our advice to you is that if you find that access arrangement to be unsuitable, inconvenient, and possibly lead to a loss of amenity to the, um, users of the footpath, that would be a much more, a much wiser way of framing it, because that is a matter of judgement more than, um, challenging the technical evidence of the highway authority. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Sims, that's beautifully put. Councillor Hunter, you want to come in?
I think councillor Stenit has, has put the argument quite correctly about heavy-duty vehicles. Having worked in that industry all my life, I know exactly what he's talking about, and I don't think Surrey highways do.
I, I think councillor Stenit is a professional on the field, uh, in this particular area, um, we should listen to him very carefully. So thank you for that, councillor Hunter, as well. So do we need councillor Val Henry?
If I might just endorse what's happening there, um, I do respect what the Surrey County Council highways officers have said, of course I do, um, but what, what we're really looking at is the, the, the danger on-site, it's not on the road, it's on, on the site itself. I just want that clarification. Thank you.
Fine, thank you very much, indeed. Before we go to the vote on this, do we need to go through the conditions that we have got there, particularly the one that Mrs. Sims so, put so well just a couple of minutes ago?
Chairman, shall we just run through them again, the reasons for refusal that we, yeah, thank you, Peter, we'll do that.
Peter?
Thank you, chairman. So the, the first reason for refusal is, is the design and impact, and visual impact, so we're using, um, the, the framework of reason for refusal one listed on page twenty-four of your agenda. So that would be along the, along the proposal, by virtue of the number of dwellings, density, scale, urbanising impact, and harm to the character and appearance of the open field would fail to preserve the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. Um, and we refer to the specific policies there, but we will also add reference to policies D one and D four of the Waverley local plan. So that is the first reason for refusal suggested. I haven't drafted a full reason for refusal, the second one, but hopefully the headlines and you'll be content that we, we can put together a full reason for refusal on, on that basis. Um, the proposed access is considered to be unacceptable in terms of its highways, uh, visual amenity impact and inconvenience to users of the public footpath, and, um, there is, has references been made to the inappropriate width of the access, but I think Elizabeth has, has recommended moving away from that based on the technical advice we've received. But, um, if members feel that, that needs to be included, we can add it, but our, our advice is against the specific highway technical safety, um, reason for refusal on those grounds. And we refer to specific, um, policies set out in local plan regarding our M, M one policies in terms of the implications of movement, development, and, um, um, amenity, uh, policies based local and national planning policy frameworks. Thank you, chairman.
Peter, I'd just add to the little bit about the, uh, use of the footpath, to the danger to the users of the footpath, because I think it does create a danger, particularly on the four point one metre bit of the road, let alone, well, the four point eight's not bright either, particularly with dogs and others roaming down there. Councillor Munnat?
Um, I'm very grateful to Mrs. Sims for her, as usual, very good advice. Could I just ask one thing for my own education? Having read the lengthy highways report again, it does seem to be focusing upon the safety of the turning movements into and out of the site, and it refers to, and I'm looking at the fourth paragraph on page thirty-five, in this regard, it is considered the proposals will not have an adverse effect on the strategic road network, and they refer to highway safety first. And I'm just wondering whether we're on such weak ground if we're referring to safety on the access road, which, whatever else it is, I don't think is part of the strategic highway network, is it? So it's the fact it's narrow and that people will be using it because it's a foot, a footpath, is that a, a fair point for us to make?
I think it's two, thank you, chairman, I think it's two separate issues. I think that if you feel that use of that footpath or vehicular traffic to access the development with intensified use would conflict with those users in terms of their, their convenience and their amenity, I think that is a sufficient reason for refusal, albeit, of course, the rights of way officer isn't objecting, but I think that is a judgement. Thank you.
Councillor Byrne, just a further point?
We're just, um, nobody's picked up on, and I don't know whether people agree with, but the conflict between two parallel private roads, um, and their access onto the main road from there, is, will be quite a severe prob, could be quite a severe problem. I think it's, it's not touched on at all in the highways report, the, the fact that you have two parallel roads, in that case serving, I think, five properties, is it, four or five properties? Um, but nevertheless, the opportunity of vehicles going there, what basically is a shared access onto the main road.
Councillor Stenit?
I'm becoming boring now. A dust cart coming from Crownley would have to go completely on the wrong side of the road to get in that entrance, and we've all got our families, we've all got our children, it's someone's mum, someone's dad, that should not happen, and it is, if you were talking about licensing for HGV, you would not be allowed to do that. Thank you.
Particularly on a road where the speed limit is totally ignored by one and all. We've had the officers read out the recommendations, I think at this point, sorry, Peter, come back?
Thank you, chairman. Um, yes, I've picked up on the, on the, the two reasons for refusal, the, the visual impact and the highway point of view, but we also need, um, agreement to include, um, the two reasons for refusal, which are set out on recommendation B on page two of your report update, so we would need to include them. So the first, or the, it would be the third reason for refusal, um, and that's the absence of a legal agreement to secure the affordable housing, and the fourth reason for refusal would be absence of the legal agreement to secure the necessary infrastructure, so we would need to include them, so there'd be four, four reasons for refusal. Thank you, chairman.
Right, members, time to vote, I think. Those in favour of the recommendation to refuse, please show. And those of the opposite view?
One.
Abstentions?
One.
Thank you very much. Therefore, permission is refused, um, turning on back to the agenda, exclusion, any legal advice, please, at this point? No? Thank you. Thank you very much, indeed, that completes the meeting.